That you would like to speak. I want to, before we proceed any further, read the COVID-19 statement, which is required due to COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with Governor Reynolds' March 192020 proclamation, suspending the regulatory provisions of Iowa Code Section 21.8 or any other statute imposing a requirement to hold a public meeting or hearing. The City of Johnson will conduct meetings electronically with a public allowed to attend for instructions denoted on the meeting's particular agenda. Meeting minutes will continue to be posted for the city council's normal course of business. The next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Jim? Was that a no? Well, Jim.
Didn't hear you, Jim.
Lost his voice. He is, I believe he has indicated no. Does anybody else have any changes to the agenda?
I just had one. I don't even know if it's appropriate to change now or question, but there was one part of the consent agenda that I just had a question on. So I don't know if we need to pull that to the non-consent or if I should just ask during the consent agenda part.
You can do it either way. You can ask, you can raise the question during discussion of the consent agenda or you can remove it.
Okay, I can just bring it up during the consent agenda.
Great. Okay, hearing that there are no changes to the agenda, do we have a motion to approve it?
That moves cope.
Second, we have a motion and second Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready? Soroka?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the public communications, we have one public communication this evening and that is the proclamation for Constitution Week. Cindy, can you tell whether or not we have that person in attendance for this?
She is not currently on in the meeting.
Well, then rather than read it, I will just encourage everyone to do that at their leisure. It marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States. Very important document in our history. And it designates September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. So we will sign that proclamation and we will get a copy of it to the group that requested that we do so. Let's see, I gotta get away from the proclamation. Okay, that was the only scheduled public communications that we have this evening. Is there anyone that is with us this evening that would like to make comments under public communications on an item that is not otherwise on the agenda? If you do, please raise your hand. See none. Okay, then we will move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening and that is to conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 20-219 granting a public utility easement within Outlaw Z of the Johnson Town Center. And we will open this public hearing at 7:22.
Good evening. This is a pretty straightforward request in order to facilitate the transmission line along Merle Road to go underground with been routed through the Johnston Town Center site. That exact alignment wasn't known when the plat was done for Johnston Town Center. And so this is just a follow-up granting of that public utility easement to allow Mid-American to install that transmission line. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, how many questions for David? Again, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone attending via Zoom that would like to address counsel on this item, please raise your hand and indicate that you would like to speak. I see none. Okay, then we will close the public hearing at 7:23. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-219?
So moved Evans.
I second Thresh.
Evans and, and, ready? Cindy, roll call please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. I will take a motion and a second first and then we'll have discussion.
Move approval cope.
Second Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mary. Just one question on the piece 6O, consider resolution number 20-216 about the Lou Clarkson softball improvement.
Which item?
6O. Oh, sorry, item O. It's the Lou Clarkson softball improvement. Just a question on the restrooms, if there was a possibility to add special needs changing table similar to how we did for the town center.
Yeah, we'll be looking at that full design with the engineer as we develop it. This service agreement just gets us the first stage of of agree, of agreement with Snyder and Associates to start that design. But we'll look at all ADA compliance and the adult changing would be one of those things we'd take a look at as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Can we vote please?
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, 8A, consider resolution number 20-214 establishing deer management zones on private property for the 2020-2021 urban bow hunt program.
That is me and this is, as the report indicates, this is the 22nd year that we participated in the urban bow hunt program. What the action is tonight is to approve private properties that could be hunted on. Basically hunting is against the, against city ordinance on any property that hasn't been approved. And so the city council has the authority to approve properties by resolution to be included in the hunt program. So this, this resolution includes five properties. All five properties have been hunted before or have participated before in the hunt. So nobody knew that, that we haven't seen before, although you know, as the hunting season continues, there may be some other requests as well. But I did have, what we did is we sent out the requests to all of the neighboring property owners and we do that so that in the event they want to participate in the meeting, they can do that, or if they want to contact me ahead of the meeting, they can do that as well. I did have one property owner actually was on the, this particular request for 7090 Coburn Lane that reached out to me and, and this property was a brand new to the area, wasn't familiar with the hunting program and he lives, you can see up at the upper right of the, the image that's on the screen at 7087 Coburn. So he just had a lot of questions about what the program's about, how it works. You know, he's comforted from the standpoint that nobody, the property owners that have the property approved for hunting, they are the only ones that can allow anybody to hunt. So they, they don't, it's not like this whole property is open to hunting at any time. Usually this property owner selects one or two hunters that, that she would allow to hunt the property. So it's very, very controlled. The property owners only allow people that they know on the properties and it's, it's, you know, not a lot of people. So the individual that I talked to after he got the information was okay with the request, actually mentioned that he may want to have his property considered in the future. So with that, again, these five properties have participated in the hunt before and I'd be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Any questions?
So Jim, how does this work on a private property? Will that be? How close is this to the rest of the other home properties?
Well, the requirement is that the hunters have to stay at least 200 feet or not hunt within 200 feet of any buildings on the property. If they do, they can get a waiver. And actually they have to ask the property owner if they would waive that 200 feet distance. And so there is a process if they're going to be closer than that. Most of the cases, there's plenty of room on the property, wooded area that can be hunted without being close to the buildings. The one, I guess the one exception, Cindy, if you can go back to the, when you were showing before, just to give you an example, you see where that yellow dot is, that is where with this property and the 200 feet guideline, you can't really see real easily, but there's a little, there's a green circle there and that's 200 feet away from the neighboring property. So there's only a corner of this property that can be allowed to be hunted based on our requirements. And so this particular hunter would hunt within that area and not within 200 feet of any home or other building on the adjoining properties.
And they use just bow and arrow, right? No guns?
Yes, it's bow hunting. Yes, it's only restricted to that. It looks like that Roger Jackson, he's one of the hunters, actually I think he's a hunter that's been identified to hunt this property, is, is wanting to speak. Roger also represents Johnston and Polk County Deer Task Force. He's been doing that for another number of years and he's a tremendous advocate for hunting and I don't think our program would be where it is if it wasn't for Roger and his advocacy for hunting and having a safe hunt and means, you know, doing what we can to make sure that we control the deer population. So Roger, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Thanks, Jim. Mostly just available for questions and so forth. So as Jim said, I've been the Johnston City Representative on the Polk County Deer Task Force for over 10 years now. Served as secretary for a few years and actually been the chair of that deer task force for the last six years. So very familiar with the program, also participate in it. I've actually been a participant since it opened in 1998, starting in Jester Park and then more recently in Johnston. Just wanted to comment. The owner at 7090 had tried to get in contact with the, the new neighbor at 7087 and actually she did make contact this evening and, and since it was a new, new neighbor did get a signature that, that he was aware of the program and as, as Jim said, didn't have any further questions or, or concerns. So I'll say on if there are any other questions about the program or any of these properties in particular, unfamiliar with all of them.
Thank you, Roger.
I have one question here. So the properties that I'm looking at, so say no, married property 7280 Northwest 58th Street. So this, as this, well, question is, I just took that as an example, but question is, have they been participating in this kind of hunt before and was that safe enough? There was no injuries or damages to anybody?
Well, in particular, the mayor property, they've been participating for many years and allowing part of their property be hunted. And I, we have not, I'm not aware of any safety issues or any concerns throughout the 22 years we've been participating in the program. There has been situations where hunters, you know, do go out and hunt on property without the property, without getting permission, which is against the law. And we've had DNR follow-up with those people and address those people from the standpoint of breaking the law. But as far as safety and our hunters being very conscious of the neighbors, I believe all the hunters that we've had have always been very safety minded and, and you know, know that there, it's a privilege for them to be out there and be able to hunt these property and don't take advantage of it, make sure that they, they do follow the rules and, and it is a safe hunt.
I'm just curious because all of those properties that have requested is on the same neighborhood that I live in. So that's all of them. So I was this, I'm just curious. I, I don't know much about how, what DNR does and how things go. So my questions are all based on just learning.
Sure. Any other questions?
I would just add, this is, you know, I think Councilman Ready's questions are all very appropriate and I think it's helpful, you know, to always review these things. This is a program that has been around for a long time. It is limited to, to bow hunting. And typically it's the property owners are very protective of making sure that anybody who comes on their property because, excuse me, you're going to be inviting somebody onto your property. You're going to want to make sure you know who it is and, and that they're going to be responsible when they're on the property. So it's been something that's been really successful and I think it's something that's beneficial to the community.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate you. And so.
You're welcome. Other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-214? Did you get that? You sorted out. We have a motion and a second. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Soroka?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans? Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8B, consider approval of Polco.
Yes.
Consider approval of Polco's service to allow a community business survey. Who's item is this?
This is mine. This is Janet's. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to share an opportunity that we had come, that Polco had come forward in regards to a community survey this year. Done in regards to using the CARES Act funds, fund this. Polco is a service that allows civic engagement within communities. They recently purchased National Research Institute, which in the information I provided, you can see that the city of Clive, Urbendale, Newton and Ankeny use NRC. The last three years we have used ETC Institute, which is a competitor to NRC. But when I followed Tom, I, Tom reached out to me today and had a few questions. And I contacted ETC Institute and it doesn't sound like they have the special endorsement with ICMA or the National League of Cities to leverage the CARES Act to get this covered. So this, this would allow us to do a community survey and a business survey to see how our residents have been affected by COVID in our businesses. We could ask the same exact questions. Within here, they would allow us to do a comparison and ask the same exact questions that ETC has in the past. So that we kind of see where the trend line falls, if it is increased or decreased at all with those existing questions that we have asked them in the past. But then it would also allow us to do a separate business survey to the businesses to see, you know, how they have been impacted. We would just need a few questions and they're related to COVID in order to have this covered through the CARES Act funding. So I think it would be a great opportunity to get that feedback. And then it also allows us to have Polco service free for an entire year. And this is one of the decision packages I brought forward last year. But it was not covered. So it would allow us to kind of utilize the service for free and see if we like it or not. The cost to have this Polco NRC service would be covered under the CARES Act funding is $21,235. When I reached out to ETC Institute, however, they don't have the special endorsement to give this covered, but their cost would be $19,900 through ETC. But it didn't sound like when I spoke with our contact there that it would be covered under the CARES Act funds. So do you, and does anyone have any questions?
Well, the question that I would hear Janet is, do we have the CARES Act funding to pay for this?
So we would have to pay for it from a city perspective and then we would submit it back to the state reimbursement. Now our timeline is limited because we have to submit documentation for reimbursement by October 9.
Can we get everything done in time to make that submission?
Yes, when I spoke with Lisa at Polco regarding this, she said, if you have it on the council agenda, we should be able to get everything passed through in order to have this done. When I spoke with Tom today, we were talking about, you know, the information we're going to have with the upcoming strategic session. We unfortunately wouldn't have, you know, the information back from the community and business survey to kind of help lead us with that. But the results should hopefully be back by the end of December if we got going on the community and business survey.
Mayor, this is Teresa. We have a couple of dates that we have to file certain things by, for this CARES, this portion of the CARES money that the governor has available for us. And this is CARES money that is for things that we could not apply for FEMA funds to get reimbursed for. So the state had money that's going to pay us for a percentage of FEMA fund. And then there was another set of funds that they're going to be, they're going to pay, quite frankly, 25% of public safety budgeted funds was one of the biggest ticket items that came across to cities when we had our, our webinar on this funding that we're going to be doing. So we have to get all of that sent in by September 15th for the first round. And then the second round, we send into them by, I think, the end of October. And we'll include this CARES or this community survey in with one of those requests that we send in.
So Teresa, you're feeling comfortable that we'll be able to get, get this funding?
Well, I really pressed the Iowa League of Cities. On that question, I'll be honest with you, I, I wasn't feeling very comfortable with it when they were telling us about it. And we pressed them and we got it back from them in writing from two different people. So I'm, I'm going with that. And they're saying that yes, absolutely, it's covered. And they have this and, and we'll see, would they better be right? So yes.
And they're saying it's covered because it was not budgeted in our current year to do the community survey. So that allows us the funding from a city perspective to be able to do it.
Yeah. And, and, and my question isn't so much about whether or not it could be covered. My question is, funding going to be there?
Oh, it's there. The state has the money.
Okay.
Yeah, that, they have the money. It's a matter of us filling out the right paperwork and getting it applied for.
All right. Just want to make sure that there's enough money there for everybody.
Right, that's true.
All right, this is, this is Thresh. I have a couple of questions. This survey that is being done, what information are being, what information is being gathered to this survey?
The community survey will be the same survey, the questions that we had in 2018 that we asked them. And I can certainly share that information with you. If you, those questions that we asked them. But there is also other COVID related questions, like how, it could be example, like how was your family affected during COVID? You know, if we wish to ask, you know, did you keep your job? Did you not keep your job? Whatever it may be, specific COVID related questions, we just need to have a few of those in there in order to have it covered. Some of the other questions are, how do you feel? Do you feel safe in our city? How do you feel about our city parks? How do you feel about our roads? It's specific questions related to that. We would make sure that those specific questions that we asked in 2018 are asked again so that we can see if we've moved the trend line, you know, how it's changed. As, as results from 2013, 2015, 2018. So we'd want to see as COVID, I mean, maybe it's affected it, maybe it hasn't with those questions that we would ask.
So.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I, could we ask a question about how many people in the household are using internet to do business, to do school? How many hours at a time? How was the connection? I mean, we could, we could feed in some of that information into our broadband study too.
Yeah, we certainly could.
Second question on the same lines is, this, the committee answers all this survey question. How are we using that to plan? Are you just applying to rest of the city planning or strategy planning? How are we using this? Answers to those questions.
Well, I think certainly use it in regards to helping with the budget. I don't think, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the strategic planning, if that does happen in October, we wouldn't have these results back yet to help us with that strategic planning meeting.
Yeah, we, that, that wouldn't quite match up, but just in relation to how we use the, the information we get from the surveys, it's been very helpful for us to understand, like, for example, you know, we, we've heard through all those, as Janet mentioned, we've done this several times and we hear and we want more restaurants and we want better access, you know, road access and those kinds of issues. And so we, we talk about those when we do our strategic planning. We also talk about it when we do our capital planning and our budgeting, you know, what did we hear from our citizens? What are the things that are important to them? So, so we do use that information when, you know, when we get the results back and, and how we, you know, what programs and what items we budget. It's very helpful to have that specific feedback from our citizens.
I just want to say, I'm really excited about this. I think it looks like a great proposal. I love that there's, you know, a male component included to help increase response rates. And I think the data will just be super helpful, even if it's not there in time for the strategic plan. But you know, from a marketing background, being able to know who your target consumer is, what they're thinking, how they're feeling. I think it only helps us. So I am excited and thanks for bringing it forward.
That sounds like a motion to me.
You're right. Yeah. So moved by me.
I'll second the motion and also sort of say that historically, we've, there's, we put a little committee together of council members and, and to, to help develop the survey instrument to, to take, you know, a look at the old survey, identify new issues, new emerging issues, sort of like Councilman Martin talked about with the broadband. So we can tweak it that way. Obviously we'd need to add some COVID in. And then, and then share that draft with all the, all the elected officials so they can see it. So it's a, it's a, it's historically been a very inclusive process to develop that survey instrument to make sure we're kind of, you know, working towards trying to identify those issues. And it, it can be very helpful as part of the budgeting process as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, Janet. Appreciate that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Freddie?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item HC, consider change orders number 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18 and 19 with Hanson JTC LLC for the Johnson Town Center project.
Good evening again. We've got a number of sort of cleanup items before you related to the Johnston Town Center. And, and these are all broken out separately. It's just the way Hanson processes sort of changes in, in design or changes in the project that they do it separately. And so that's why we've got so many different change orders here before you. I will go through them relatively quickly and feel free to stop me as I go and ask any questions that you might have. Change order 11 is related to the fact that we've acquired additional property along Northwest 63rd. We actually previously approved change order 10, which was the demolition of those structures. Change order 11 would cover changes to the site. Basically what we're planning to do is do some buffer landscaping there, remove a fence that was originally intended. Then the bulk of this cost would be extending the sidewalk along 63rd. And as noted, this covers the eastern two properties. The western property was acquired at a little bit later date and that will come as a separate, separate change order in the future. Change order 13 relates to video conferencing. This really came up as. This really came up as a discussion as part of the, all the Zoom meetings we've been doing related to COVID. And the large conference room was set up for full video audio function. The two smaller conference rooms were not. And so this change order will allow the additional equipment, basically a a video soundbar that would be added in each of those rooms that would allow for Zoom meetings to occur in both of the two smaller conference rooms. Change order 14, we previously approved the change order on the site support building. As that was getting bid out, there were a couple of questions related to some door modification hardware, particularly the electronic locks that would be used on the restrooms. So they can be programmed. We needed to make some modifications to that. And that's what is related to change order 14. Change order 15 is related to ADA truncated domes. Earlier this year, we updated our SUDAS specifications to require metal truncated domes. When the project was originally bid, we did allow the plastic truncated domes in, in talking with Public Works and the design team felt it was appropriate to, while we couldn't fall into the original standard, because that's when we, the plans were approved, although it was prudent to update these truncated domes, which will have a longer life expectancy. And so that $5280 is, is the up charge for the swapping of the materials there. Change order 16 is related to building signage. So our original lease purchase price included a number of allowances for various items, one of which included signage. There was a $20,000 allowance for building signage. This is external signage, so the large Johnston logo on the building and a couple of locations, all door signage. So when you come into City Hall, we'll have building hours, those types of things. And then all internal signage, which includes the applications on the feature walls, signage at all the offices, et cetera. When that process, when that package was put together and bid out, the total cost was $26,968. So this change order will be for the overage of the original allowance amount. So $6,968. Change order 17 relates to some additional painting that was requested in some of the administration offices. It's a small one. Change order 18 is related to some changes in parking stall signage that would identify where city fleet vehicles are going and then modify the locations of some loading zone areas and, and those signage. Change order 19 is the big one. As you recall, back, you know, on July 6th, we approved change order eight, which converted the site support building from ice chilling equipment and storage building into more of a site support building that would house a concession room or office as well as bathrooms and storage. That building is now under construction. At the time, the, from a timing perspective, we really wanted to get that building going, get that started while we were working on final design of changes to the ice rink to convert that from a synthetic to a synthetic ice rink and the associated railings and other improvements around there. The underlying concrete pad had to be modified as well. And we did an ex, pretty significant expansion of the splash pad function from what was originally a pretty basic splash pad to one with much more design and functionality. In addition, some of the charges here are getting the site ready for the Ripples art piece. So the concrete pad was enlarged for that would go. There was conduit ran for electrical to accommodate lighting, et cetera. This doesn't include the lighting. But this sets us up, sets that pad up and gets, gets us ready for the Ripples. I will note that there may be some additional changes coming related to that as they're working on some ADA design to make sure that when that gets installed, it's fully ADA compliant. So this change orders for just under $700,000. If you look at the deductions that came out of the contract with change order eight, our net overall project savings are just under $17,000. So a little bit less than what we were hoping for. But certainly we've increased a lot of functionality as a result of the changes on the site. As a reminder, all of these are coming out of the owner's contingency. The log is attached as an attachment there. When we originally started the project, we had a $375,000 contingency. We've had a number of change orders, many of which have taken things out of the project. And so as a result of the change orders noted here, our balance would still be 1,572,000. And so any funds remaining in that contingency at the completion of the project will be deducted from the lease purchase price. So we're continuing to work hard to bring the project in on time and under budget. So I covered an awful lot there with all of those. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have.
Any questions for David?
David, so on your discussion about the ice rink and the splash pad changes and noting that the cost savings is only 16,000, but operationally, the, the, we're going to be, we're going to save quite a bit by going this route as well, which isn't really reflected in that number. Is that a fair statement?
This is, this is, this is just construction savings. And obviously, you know, the addition of bathrooms and concession building and the speed table, all of those things will just, you know, make, make the whole site function better as well. So.
Yeah. So it's, I mean, it's that. And then the fact we don't, I mean, you know, the Zamboni and all the, the expenses of that are gone. So there's a lot of operational side things that we save on this too. So.
Correct.
Other questions or comments?
If there aren't any, I will give a quick update on construction of City Hall. If you haven't been by lately, it's progressing very, very well. The office furniture for the admin side showed up today and they started install. That'll be getting installed this week and all of next week. Making great progress really throughout the entire building. Our targeted move in date is now Thursday, October 8th. For City Hall to close on the 8th and 9th of October to allow the move to occur. Give us the weekend to get any bugs and, and such ironed out. And we hopefully open for business on Monday, the 12th. And that's the current schedule and it's going to be progressing pretty nicely towards that. So.
Have you guys talked about a grand opening or an opening ceremony?
Well, we have a little bit. The challenge we'll have is we're still going to be in the, right in the middle of an active construction site when City Hall opens. So our only access will be from 63rd and the driveway is off of 63rd. You know, the old City Hall will have to get torn down and then all the yard features will have to get built. And so I think the thought is we would, we would save and hopefully give some time for, for COVID to settle down a little bit, but would save more of the grand opening ribbon cutting for sometime in the spring when, when, you know, the yard is finished and it looks better. We are initially planning, we've already been, we've already got our videographer lined up to do sort of a virtual tour. That'll just kind of showcase City Hall and some of the features that we'd be able to hopefully roll out shortly around, around the time when we're moving in. So we have, give folks one option to socially distance and see the new City Hall, but probably most likely save the bigger grand opening for spring. But we're certainly open to conversation or comments the council might have on that, but that's kind of the current thinking.
We still need a motion on the, on item HC.
Move approval code.
A second inspiration.
Do you have a motion as second? Cindy Bolt, please.
Yes.
Evans? Martin?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Freddie?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8D, and if you have any comments for David on grand opening, please feel free to forward those to him at any time. And if you haven't taken a tour, I'm sure David would be more than happy to take you on a tour of the building as well. It is pretty amazing.
Absolutely, anytime.
Item 8D, consider approval of claims in the amount of $1,638,742.12. We have a motion to approve?
Move approval code.
I second inspiration.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, Cindy Bolt, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Freddie?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item 9A, an update on the broadband visioning process. And I know this is one that, that Councilmember Evans is really looking forward to.
This is Adam. A quick update from the committee that's been looking at study. Just a quick refresher, back in the budgeting process last year, the council allocated up to $25,000 for a visioning process to look at the existing service needs, existing service quality, public infrastructure and kind of next steps on how to improve broadband connectivity in Johnston. We released a request for proposals several months back. We received about 11 different responses from that, of which the committee interviewed three, HR Green, Magellan, and Alchemy Group. The discussion was they're all fairly well qualified. HR Green stood out a little bit in a couple of ways. And the recommendation was to move forward with them since that committee discussion to get back together with them and give a little bit of an update on what we look for as far as interacting with Metronet as part of this process and how to cover public engagements during the time of COVID here and what that looks like online. Also had a meeting today with the Des Moines Metro Practitioners Group. And the Des Moines Partnership is working towards a metro-wide broadband study as well. Their recommended firm is also HR Green. So there could be some synergy there and some kind of cooperation with them as far as deep diving into some specific results in Johnston. And adding that into the overall metro studies. So that's where things currently stand. If the full council is comfortable with the committee's recommendation, we move forward with HR Green drafting the contract and bringing that in front of you here in the next council meeting or two.
I guess, Adam, the one thing I would add is that with, with the committee, you mentioned Metronet, but the, but the committee is wanting HR Green to work with all the, either the current incumbent providers of broadband service in the community, to the extent that they, and, and are willing to, to look at identifying those areas in which there are shortages as well as Metronet as well. And so we're, we're, we, we want to make it very clear to HR Green that they need to be and have every reason to believe that they'll be provider neutral.
Yes, fair point. As far as expanding service, that would include the existing players as well as Metronet. And then also looking at the actual build out of the Metronet product. I think there's maybe some more specific work that'll be done with that in that regards.
Sure.
Any other comments?
I think just one that I, I learned during this RFP process and I thought might be helpful context for others too. You know, one of the reasons why I think, I mean, there's many reasons why I think this visioning process will still be helpful, even with Metronet coming in. But additionally, one of the reasons that was brought up by one of the firms is that as part of this visioning process, we're able to get an actual asset inventory of our current, you know, infrastructure. And in terms of like where utility poles are and things like that. And so that can actually help the city in terms of having more leverage in negotiating with someone like a Metronet and being able to more clearly delineate what the city is bringing to bear on our end as we try and, you know, encourage Metronet to build out maybe beyond where they might originally have planned. So just want to share that as well of why I'm also excited about this.
Any of the council members that weren't on the, the committee reviewing this are interested in seeing any of the other RFP responses or HR Green's proposal or presentation to the committee. I'd be happy to forward that over to you.
Okay, with that, are we ready to move to other city administrator staff comments? Yes, we've got a few other things to cover. While Adam's on the line, why don't you go ahead and give us an update on the issue with the Roughwood proposal by Steve Scott and sales tax incentive program?
Sure, thanks, Jim. Yes, one other item that went in front of the Economic Development Committee for discussion was regarding use of some sales tax proceeds to help incentivize and encourage the restaurants and retail developments that I think there's been a lot of interest in, both in the community surveys in the past, and it's been kind of guiding the town center and some of the incentives aligned with the Roughwood project. The proposal was an interesting one. Would have essentially taken a percentage of the sales tax received by the city and then rebate it back to the actual restaurateur or the retail company. We did have a little discussion on this, and I think there's maybe a bit of a misunderstanding from the developer that we receive more of the sales tax than we do. Currently, we only receive the 1%, of which at least half is required by the state to go towards property tax reduction. So that does leave a very limited amount of sales tax that we would be able to provide as any incentive. And of course, much of it's already been spoken for and it was on a ballot with a specific language. So there's some logistical challenges with actually implementing that. I would note though, that we've had some discussion about the Iowa reinvestment districts as well, which does allow the city to capture additional percentage of the sales tax. Those administrative rules are still being looked at, but that would potentially allow for both the use of that sales tax receipt for additional investment in that area or potentially some sort of an incentive to help bring those types of businesses around. So we've had some preliminary discussion about applying for that within the Gateway District previously in 2013, I believe it was. The city did make an application under the former rules of the program. We did not receive the award at that time. But they are anticipating opening that back up with new funding come the spring. So that's being looked at and we're starting to go through and we review the, the Gateway application that was put in at that time with the expectation that we'll probably be reapplying in spring of 2021 there. So it's kind of a good idea from the developer, I think, but unfortunately, logistically, there'd be some hurdles to actually go forward and do that in any sort of a meaningful way.
Any questions for Adam on that issue? Okay, Chief Clark wanted to make an announcement this evening.
Yes, thank you, Jim. We made a contingent offer for the deputy fire chief position, which has been open almost since the first of the year. And it was accepted. It's a contingent offer. It's Chief Brian Burrow. For those of you that were not familiar with the entire process, we started with 42 applicants. We narrowed it down to 16 that we surveyed to based off of the applications that we received. From those 16, we narrowed it down to six. Those six, we did a video conference interview with, and it was two other members of the Fire Department plus HR Director and Finance Director, Teresa, and then HR Manager, City Clerk, Cindy. And so the five of us narrowed down based on those initial interviews to the top three. And then we had some council members, firefighters, department heads and other staff members do interviews of those final three. And then we had several discussions with city administrators from both Johnston Grinds, HR people on both sides. And it was a very tough decision. Actually, one of the candidates did better, I would say. Actually, one of the candidates did better, I would say, in the last interview, but weighing all of the factors of experience, talking with their references, it was a tough decision. But I arrived at the fact that I think Chief Burrow will actually provide the most help to our organization in the short amount of time, shortest amount of time. And so we made an offer, he accepted. We're waiting for results of the physical and drug tests, which I'm sure he will pass, but we're just waiting for those to come through and waiting to hear when he'll be able to travel. He's currently over in Japan. He's a fire chief, regional fire chief for the marine firebases in Japan, Guam, South Korea, and Hawaii. And so he'll be resigning from that position, and whenever he can get a charter flight out, hopefully later in October or the first of November, then he'll be joining us in Johnston as part of the Johnston Grinds Metropolitan Fire Department as our deputy chief of operations.
Okay, thank you, Jim, for the summary there.
Thank you.
Just to a couple of the things. First of all, we met this afternoon regarding the climate change committee. As the council may remember, we had a proposal before us regarding putting a climate change committee together. And so Councilmember Martin, Councilmember Soroka, and the mayor met with the committee this afternoon.
It was cold.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's a pretty significant insult of Councilman Soroka.
I am sorry, it was, okay. But anyway, so we met with them this afternoon to talk about, you know, what their vision is for the, for the committee and how that interplays with the city. And so they're going to continue to meet as a group. They said they had upwards to 40 people have shown some interest to participate. They would like to have a member of the city council participate in the committee meetings just as a liaison from our group to their group. They're going to come up with some proposals that they would like for us to consider as we go through our strategic planning and eventually the budget session, just to think about, you know, not only what we're currently doing, which we talked about some of the things that are already happening in Johnston around the metro area. There's a lot going on to try to address, address these issues, but there's always more that you can do. So it was a good meeting. I think we accomplished a lot and all agree that, you know, it's an important issue for our community and, you know, something that we need to consider as we go forward. So I just wanted to just mention that that meeting happened and just pretty fresh right now. I haven't gone back over my notes to talk and think specifically about what we talked about. But anyways, anybody want to add to that? I just want to at least let you guys know that the meeting did happen.
I think, thought we had a very nice discussion with the residents, Lily and Ginger and Steve, who were the public members who participated on the call. I think they're, they're full of energy. They have lots of great ideas. I think they want to work with us. And so just looking forward to seeing where that process takes us.
All right, just one other thing from me, and I just wanted to announce that we had a staff member that reached a very, very important milestone in their career. Teresa Rochafer, within the last few weeks, began her 40th year, finished her 40th year of service to local government. And that's quite an accomplishment, but she's, she's been at some level of government service for now over 40 years. So I just wanted to recognize her in front of the council. So and then just, did you want to say anything, Teresa?
I started when I was two. No, I, that's 40 years in two cities. That's it. So.
An amazing accomplishment, so.
Thank you.
You can't hear it, but I was clapping from behind the screen.
All right, thank you, Scott.
All right. And then just one other final thing. Tim Pearson has now joined us, and there was a question during the work session related, or yeah, we discussed the, the dangerous dog case that is coming before the city council next Tuesday. And so there was a question as far as what decisions need to be made next Tuesday night or I guess more the process of what happens after we conduct that hearing with the city council on Tuesday.
Yes, thank you, Jim. References to the Johnston Code Section 55.10 subsection 7, which indicates that after the hearing, the council may affirm, modify, or reverse the order of the city administrator. Such determination should be contained in a written decision and should be filed with the city council within five days after the hearing. I believe that the council, if they so wish, could indicate that at the end of the hearing that they will now adjourn and that a written decision will be filed with the city clerk within five days after the hearing date. The council could then deliberate between themselves and come up with a decision. If it's a unanimous decision, then a written opinion reflecting that decision would be written. If it's, if there's any dissenting opinions, the consent could indicate, they could write a dissenting opinion as well. So I believe that the council, at the end of the hearing, would just affirm the code section and that they will indeed file a written opinion filed with the city clerk within five days.
Tim, would those discussions between city council members be public? Or are you saying we can discuss through email?
I think that, that the wise thing would be is that at the end of the hearing is that you have your deliberations and then, then put a written decision that reflects those deliberations.
Okay, so you're basically saying during the, during the meeting, we should pretty much deliberate then. Okay.
Tim, if, if, in essence, if the council felt that the city administrator's decision was appropriate, and I'm not advocating for this, to do this necessarily, but could the council then, in essence, take no action? And by taking no action, that has the effect of affirming the city administrator's decision?
Well, I believe the way it reads is it indicates that, that council may affirm, modify, or reverse the order. It doesn't say shall, it just says may affirm, modify, or reverse the order of the city administrator. And then it says, however, it says it shall, the determination shall be contained in a written decision. So I think the, our statute implies that there actually has to be a written decision as to one of those decisions, either affirm, modify, or reverse.
Okay, so, so basically, we, we have to come to some, we have to, in essence, make a determination.
Correct.
Okay, and so, and so I, I mean, to me, it would, what would seem to be the most appropriate would be that since we're all gathered that night to hear the hearing, and obviously, we could decide at that point how we wanted to handle it based on what we hear at the hearing. But I would be personally prepared to, unless it's a very, you know, you know, reserving my right to think differently, I would think that it would make sense for us to deliberate there or if we, if we preferred to dismiss the parties and deliberate in a way that was just, just the members of the council, if that's appropriate, and then make our decision right there and then, and then direct staff to come up with some sort of written summary of that report.
With the Zoom, you have the, the ability to go off on the, from the Zoom conference and deliberate and come back on, re-invite if you wish. We can do your deliberation there and before all the parties and then make your, and just indicate at that time, the decision, but that a written, I think you have to, under our statute, have to provide a written decision of whatever you come up with within the five days to the clerk of court, to the, excuse me, to the city clerk.
And so that, in that written determination, the determination in the written decision can be as, as, as simple as we, the city council, affirm the decision of the city administrator, and are we required by law to outline our rationale, or can we just have it as simple as we affirm? Are we, are we reverse the order of the city administrator?
No, I think that if you, if you're affirming that decision, you're affirming it based upon the record. If you go on to that code, that code section, it says that the, the hearing shall include the record made before the city administrator, of which it is planned to have a complete, we're going to have a flash drive to all council members and to Paul up that indicates what was before the, the record that was made at that time. And then it indicates then any additional evidence, also they consider the arguments of the parties and their representatives, any additional evidence which was not available at the time of the appeal hearing before the city administrator. So any additional evidence would have to be identified as evidence that was not available before the city administrator at the time of the hearing. And then there's a caveat that you can also include any other information that council deems necessary. So if a council member deems it necessary to do, ask a follow-up question, ask for follow-up information, deems that necessary to the hearing process, they can do so. Then I think depending upon what the decision is, if it's to affirm, then that written decision of Jim's is affirmed as is, and I think it could be just very brief. If it's to modify, I think you have to state what was modified and why, and if it was overturned or reversed, I think you would have to state what the, that it was indeed reversed on the following basis.
And Tim, will you or Bob be attending this hearing and be available to provide legal guidance to the council?
Absolutely. One or both of us plan on being in attendance, and I believe that the city prosecutor may also be on, in attendance at that hearing as well.
Who's the city prosecutor?
Larry Hanley.
Okay. And who's, is he with a different firm or who's, what's his role?
Yeah, he's with, they handle all the prosecutions. He actually is going to be with the police chief that evening to provide guidance to the police department if necessary.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure.
So, Tim, just as a point of clarification, after we have heard all of the evidence and arguments and we want to deliberate, would we be going into closed session to do that? Or could we go into closed session to do that?
Well, I think that you would have, if you're going to deliberate, I think you'd have to go into closed session. It would be preferable based upon circumstances of this case that any deliberation be just right there on, on the, on the record, and then the council has their vote, and then a written decision be formulated within five days thereafter. But it, the statutes doesn't say one way or the other. So yes, if you did go off the record, I think you'd have to be in a closed session. And then obviously, for appeal purposes, if the, if either party wished to appeal your decision, then they would have, they would have the closed session record that was already, that would have been recorded.
I guess what I was thinking is we could go into closed session, we could deliberate, come back out of closed session and report on what our decision is.
Well, that, that certainly, I believe, is an option that's available in addition to just deliberating without going into closed session and then making a decision, whatever the council, I believe, would prefer.
Yeah, I mean, we could do it either way.
Correct.
And kind of the intent would be to do it that night, correct? Mayor, is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Yeah, but to me, that would make sense to.
Yeah, I mean, if we, we'll, we'll receive a lot of information in advance, as I understand it. But if we hear a lot of new additional information, a lot of argument that, that, you know, isn't in the prior record, we may want to go into closed session just to have some discussion about that new information, that new evidence, and then come back out and we can, you know, we can, we can report on what our decision is and any member of the council can, you know, share, share what, what the rationale was or what their thinking was.
I think that would be fine. I think that it's our goal to try to have to all council members and to you Paul, by, by, by Friday, a flash drive of all the, the record that was made in the case. And then in that, there may be any additional, if there's any additional new evidence in there, we'll try to identify that as well, that was not subject to, available at the time. But it's our goal to have everything to council members by Friday so they would have the weekend to be able to review everything before the Tuesday night hearing.
Okay, okay.
And just so that the council, there is a significant amount of information that will be provided to you on Friday. There's a, a lot of information in the record. Also, just to let you know that the hearing is scheduled for Tuesday at 6:00 in, in the evening, and that, that notice was sent out to the, to the mayor and council today. To my knowledge, we haven't heard from the, the other party about whether their, that date works for them. Is that correct, Tim?
Yes, we've received mixed signals from the other party, their attorney in regards to that. They made an open records request last Friday, and that records request would appear that we would not be able to get it to them. Depending upon whether they wish to narrow the request, we would not be able to get that information to them prior to the hearing date. I received in one conversation today, Bob and I received, well, I need that information for the hearing. And in the next breath, we received a, well, I don't want to skip that hearing date. I want to proceed with that hearing date. So we are, we'll be confirming that tomorrow, one way or the other. I anticipate, plan on the hearing, if you want my gut feeling upon how it, how it will go down. So I anticipate that we will be having the hearing next, the next Tuesday evening at 6:00.
Okay, thank you, Tim. I saw the chief, McDaniel wanted to mention something. Is it related to this chief, or do you have something else we were going to talk about?
No, I have something much lighter to discuss.
So we'll, we'll leave this issue for now, and why don't you go ahead and whatever you wanted to share with the council.
I just wanted to give everyone a heads up on a few community service projects we have in the works in the police department. We're quickly getting into the fall and holiday season. Some of you may have seen last week, a Facebook post about breast cancer awareness and some pink patches that the police department has released. We're planning on doing a broader release of that here as we get closer to October. Hey, look at that, the mayor's got one, perfect. To give you a little perspective on, on that, this will be our first year with this initiative. Recently, we had breast cancer strike pretty close to Homer Johnson, police department family. So this is an effort to raise awareness for Susan G. Komen and the efforts associated with that. The police department command staff, we donated all the funds for the patches on the front end of it, and then we're selling them for, for $10 apiece. All the proceeds will go to Susan G. Komen and breast cancer. a piece. All the proceeds will go to Susan G. Komen and breast cancer awareness for the month of October. Then moving into November, is typically our No Shave November month, where we do a fundraiser for nonprofits. And this year, I'm really excited. We've been in discussions with Will Keeps of StartsRightHere.org, who is a tremendous man with, with quite a mission for diversity and inclusion and working with the youth throughout the Des Moines metropolitan area, some of which are involved here in Johnston. So we're, we're going to be rolling out an initiative with him, it looks like, for the month of November association with our No Shave November project. And then in December, typically, that would be our shop with the cop through our Johnston Blue Dragon program. So there'll be some fundraising for that as well. Given COVID, we're not exactly sure how shopping with a cop looks. So we're still working through some of that. But you're going to see some things coming over these fall months, leading into the end of the year, with some community outreach efforts that we're trying to build support within the community for some causes that we believe in very strongly.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. I think that's all we have for this evening, Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to city council comments. Councilmember Cole?
I'll pass.
Councilmember Ready?
I don't know anything to add.
Councilmember Evans?
Nothing.
Councilmember Soroka?
I just have a couple of really short ones. So thanks to Matt Greiner, who helped with a resident with some storm debris pickup related questions, as if there was enough storm debris stuff. So appreciated. And then thanks to Dave Volreding, Doug Sandvig, Jim Sanders, about resident concern about the former Village Inn property. And then also thanks to Jim on a water bill question issue. So all appreciated and grateful. So thanks all.
Councilwoman Martin?
I just wondered, is anyone else participating in the standstill Johnston homecoming parade? And, and so I look forward to seeing you out there.
I haven't heard of that. What is that?
Oh, you haven't? Well, I'll send you an email from the city, the student group.
Okay, cool.
It's like next Thursday, it's, it's coming right up.
I think it's the 17th, and what it is, I think they just line us all up out in the parking lot, and then cars drive by. And you can't, you can't hand out anything at the time. You can contribute to a goodie bag, no candy, but just merchandise. And I just saw the email, the merchandise needs to get to the parade committee by the 11th. So, so if you have beads or whatever, it should be interesting. We may do with what we can under the circumstances. Anything else, Councilwoman Martin?
No, thank you.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to again, share that the send-off ceremonies out of Camp Dodge continue. I participated in one this morning, and there's another one coming up on Sunday of this week. Both, both groups, these, both of these groups are headed to Kosovo. So at least they're, they're headed off to peacekeeping, a peacekeeping mission in, in Kosovo. What they reported to me today is we have several more that will take us through at least the month of October and maybe into November. And then we'll start bringing some of them home. So that's, 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 that's the good news. Unfortunately, through all of this, it's been different because we, you know, we stand there and we make remarks to the soldiers that are being sent off, but there's no family members, no friends, you know, in, in the audience. They're all participating virtually. So that's been the send-offs, and I expect that many of the welcome homes will be the same. But again, you know, they appreciate the community support, and you know, these are, these are people who are spending time away from their families and friends, again, during very, very difficult times. So keep them in your thoughts and prayers, and hopefully they'll all return home safely soon. So anyway, anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned. Thanks all.
Hi, guys. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.